First of all, she said that they were pre-printed. Then she said, "No, no, no, the supervisor elections stamped everyone." Therefore, there were no ballots that were not stamped. However, um, Gaines himself contradicted this. Because he said Gaines was the presiding officer for, they were returning officer for Central Leeward. He had to admit that there were over three hundred and twenty ballots. He said, "All the ballot papers in one polling division did not bear the official mark." Just as we were saying. But he said, "Nevertheless, even though the law says that I should not count them, I went ahead and counted them." That's the case. I went ahead and counted them. So, um, we have before us here what Rule 31 sets about the voting procedure, which is that the ballot paper should be marked with the official mark. Either stamped, this is an exact quote from the Representation of the People's Act. Either stamped with the official mark or perforated and then the initials of the presiding officer. I had a picture, I want you to look at this picture. This thing is not behaving well. Somebody flipping, flipping, but I'll do my best. Because I want you to see this picture, this picture. That picture will have a pointer. But that is a live rail ballot from the, um, Central Leeward election. And if you look at it, you would see that there is no presiding officer's mark on it and there is no initial. In fact, it is cut off in a sort of, um, in an illegal way. We called them, we said they were mutilated. They look as if they were horribly done and stuffed into the ballot box. And there are over three hundred and twenty ballots, just like that, in Central Leeward alone. And I guarantee you people, that if we search all those boxes for all the election, we will find, maybe not in Ralph's constituency. Not in the Grenadines, they wouldn't bother down there. But in most of them. Who was the car, um, the PS six nine MSB? It's a, it's a minivan, Chevrolet.
All the, all the people who have parked outside in the driveway. The church just finished upstairs and they gotta leave. And the cars are parked there. So, you know who parked in a line outside in the driveway? You're blocking people from getting home. So they're ready to leave. So they can leave, so you can park in their place. So go move your cars, please. All of that, thank you.
Okay. So I hope you have been looking at the ballot paper that I'm showing you there in the meantime. As I said, it's a photograph of one of the ballot papers that were, and that is from the Central Leeward constituency. And as I was saying, if we were to examine most of the ballot boxes from the other constituencies, we would find similar ballots. And that is how, and explain later, how they will manage to steal the election. Good. So, Rule 31 is the voting procedure for, um, the ballots, which is when you go, I'll tell you, you can read it. When the voter comes in, they go to the table. The, uh, presiding officer and the clerk will take out a ballot paper. The ballot paper has three parts, the, um, and the counterfoil. You tear it out of the book. And what is left, you're left with is the ballot paper and the counterfoil. The law says that the... If you read that, it says exactly what should happen. Why is it necessary to put the mark? The law says that you must put the official mark and initials on it just before giving it to a voter. So that to pre-print the mark is illegal. Yet, why would Mrs. Finley swear to this? To further show her recklessness, the supervisor of elections states that the presiding officer did in fact put the mark during the election. Well, I think I discussed that already. Uh, rejected ballots, Rule 40. Any ballot paper which does not bear the official mark shall be void. That means that it cannot be counted. That means that over three hundred and twenty ballots should not have been counted in this election. Okay, this is the procedure we're dealing with. I'll just skip that, you can read it. Um, now, the thing about this official mark is that it should be secret. You do not know before the election what the official mark would be. Sometimes it is, uh, it is like a word, like S I M G. Or maybe a bill or something. So that, if you want to steal an election and you do not know what the official mark is going to be, or you don't, and it changes according to the polling divisions. So if you print ballot papers and do not, and meanwhile I'll show you what a proper ballot paper should look like. Let me see if I can go down to it and find it. Oops. This is moving, no, the top one, I don't, oh, this is moving very badly. Let me go back. The top one. Right, that's the one I told you, that is what they have, but it is badly designed. I want to show you what a ballot paper should look like. And I have one here, let me just get to it. Right, so it's not still. It's not still. Nine twenty eight, yeah. Because it's important that you understand it, huh? An official ballot paper should have three parts. The thumb, the ballot paper, and the top, the counterfoil. It's there? Good. Okay. That is the counterfoil. Up there. This is what it should look like. You see that box? That is where you put the official mark and the initials. You can see there? I don't know, how to get that bigger? How does he get it bigger?
Yes.
There's a square box where I'm putting the cursor. You see that? That is where the official mark should go. So they can look at it, yeah. And that should be on the ballot paper itself, not on the counterfoil. This is a ballot from the 2015 election. Look at that box there. That is where they put the box for the official, for the, um, for the initials on the counterfoil. That is illegal. It should be down here on the ballot paper. And the supervisor of elections swore that she supervised and looked at the ballot papers before they were passed. How is it that they printed all the ballot papers in the 2015 elections wrong? Why? This is what we have to ask, the incentives. Why did they put the box for the official mark on the counterfoil? And not on the ballot, which is a legal thing to do. If you look at it, I wish I could join up a bit further for you. See if you can do that. Because this is what, this is how they, I want to explain how it was done. Okay. It's clear enough, right?
Yeah.
Good. So, this was a proper ballot from the election. You can see, if you can read that, it's Michael Brown, Western Georgia, incidentally. It was, um...
Ninety one?
Yeah, ninety four elections. Eva and Francis Gibson. And you could see cancer, it was a proper ballot. There is the counterfoil. You see what it says, "Do not fold beyond this line." Above that is the counterfoil. Everything below here is the ballot. And over here would be this tub. That would be left in the books. So you see, this is where the official mark should go. Why? So, when the voter comes in and you get the ballot paper and the initial is on the ballot itself, you go into the room, you mark your X, and you fold it up to this mark here. So when you bring it back, the presiding officer would see his mark and know that it is a valid ballot. And then he drops it into the box. Okay? Now, if you can bring up the other one. So I can show you. Wonderful. Wonderful. Now, you notice that there is a Form 7 here? That is the form from the Representation of the People's Act. That sets out exactly how the ballot paper should be done. But what is different about this one? You notice it says, "General election, Central Leeward constituency." So that is from the last general election. This is where they put the box for the mark of the, for the, uh, the official mark. On the counterfoil. Do not fold beyond this line. Okay? They put it on the... The box with the counterfoil. For the, uh, on the, for the election. The presiding officers tried to compensate for the fact that the box was not in the correct place. So, you see where I have the cursor here? Most of the ballots which were counted, the three hundred, three hundred and twenty had no marks at all, and I'll get back to that. The others would have had a mark somewhere about right here, right where I'm putting the cursor. But you have to fold the ballot paper up to this line. So what do you think would happen when you bring it back? What do you think would happen? They would have to open the ballot to see if it is a proper one with the mark on it, and they would see the vote. That was the reason for misdesigning the ballots. They would keep a tab and they would know exactly how many votes a particular party got. Now, therefore, when you have ballots like that, you will have an idea of how many, if you need maybe, um, a hundred votes in this polling division, a hundred and twenty in another one. That's where we found the ballot papers without any official mark on them. And torn off, like how I showed you, cut off, dropped into the ballot box. So, that is basically the crux of our case. That the, so, that's how we found out how they were stealing the election. So, we... I want to show you a picture here. Oops. That picture. You saw it very quickly? After the election, the Sunday after. This gentleman is the, the returning officer. Yes. The one in the picture. The one in the picture. With Mr. Gaines. He is the returning officer. You go on to that. He found himself with an envelope on it marked C L, Central Leeward. He and the supervisor of election went to the election office because the NDP was protesting very strongly, that one. That is the election, electoral office in St. Vincent. And you could see the C L, he was caught on camera. What was he doing there the Sunday after the election? What were they going to do?
It's supposed to be a church.
What were they going to do? There it is. Police were on duty too. Look at it, C L. And the other slide would show you. How you do that, is that, are you ready? Oops. That's the supervisor of election caught on, on tape, yes, that one. And it was, yes. I asked, "What were they really doing in electoral office, these officers for Central Leeward?" And so, newspaper search like that, it's supervisor of election, you see how they put it? If you are a reporter, reporting, um... In a reasonable manner, without bias, as if it was going to the office on a Sunday. On a Sunday, not a working day. But the headlines for the searchlights, supervisor of election are posted aggressively for a second time. Because persons stopped her and took pictures of her. And the article told you exactly what happened. So, oops. Come back, I need help. I want to show you the boxes. Because that's a lot of grievance that we have. The law says that the ballot boxes should be locked with a key. The law says there must be a lock and a key. And this is to secure the boxes, this one. Those are the plastic bins that we use in St. Vincent. And you see that paper over it that is supposed to be the seal? This paper, this. You're supposed to seal it off with a paper that if you remove it, it will be, it will disintegrate. You cannot put it back. This is what St. Vincent government gives us, the electoral office seals. You can pull it off, put it back a thousand times and no one would know. These seals, anybody could go on the internet, read it up and see how to open these seals and put them back. Now, each seal has an individual mark. Nobody recorded any of the marks. So nobody would know whether they removed this, these, did what, do whatever they want to do and put them back. Now, you'll notice this flap, it's a massive flap, look at it. Why it like that? So that if you wanted to drop in fifty ballots one time, you could just drop them in very easily. So we say that these boxes are illegal. And the supervisor of election, in her election report, the O A S, in their election report, commented on the fact that the ballots were illegal, the boxes are not the boxes prescribed by the law. And despite the fact that the supervisor commented on it in the previous section, they still use the St. Vincent. We say that they are not secure, the flap is too big. And unless you have persons of absolute integrity keeping these boxes, who don't go on a Sunday, to them, then we are saying that our election system is flawed and it must be changed. So, we are convinced that this is how they were stealing the election. Um, and that we, the people, we must call for a change. Now, you may say that the supervisor of election has been changed. That is so. But I remember when Silver Finley Scrub went there the first time. She seemed approachable and everything was okay. But when the crunch came, when the crunch came, I am satisfied that she did not do her job well. And the people, we are the ones that would have to, um, ensure that this does not happen again in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And that is what the end of people will be doing for you. And that is why we have brought these petitions at great cost and expense in time and energy that we put out. And we intend to persevere to the end. Now, what is sad about it is that three years have gone and we have not had the petitions through it yet. They have done everything in the book. They say that there is, they say that we are wrong, that it is not true that these, um, that most of the ballots were not properly stamped and that everything is done proper. But yet, they have paid to bring in... Top lawyers. Thank you. Top lawyers, paying them hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend it. They fought total nail to ensure that we did not get into those boxes. And they succeeded, simply on a, on a matter that had nothing to do with our case as such. It was a technical thing. The judge held that when we were refused the right to look into the ballot box, we should have appealed that judgment, rightly or wrongly. We should have appealed, that is a judgment by cotton. And because it was not appealed, we could not come a second time and having filed the petition and asked to look in the ballot boxes. So on that ground, that is why we were not allowed to see in the boxes. But we are absolutely sure, even when we go to court in December, we can, if the judge is convinced from the evidence, and I don't see how she cannot be, that we can again ask for scrutiny to see the ballot boxes. No doubt we will do that in December, when the matter is through. So I just wanted to give you this update, that persons may say, "Oh, we are joking, we are just, uh, it's just politics, there's nothing in it." Our democracy is at, is, it, yes, on trial. You saw what Ralph Gonzalez did when we brought a vote of no confidence to the House. It's a travesty of justice. Ralph Gonzalez turned our no confidence motion into a confidence motion. Raping our constitution. But this has never happened before. He himself brought several votes of no confidence to the House when he was in the opposition. The NDP did not stop him. It went through. But so afraid was him, according to Subota Caesar, you know. He has no moral or legal authority to speak for him. You know what Subota Caesar was saying? Subliminally, what he was saying? Exactly, if the election, you have no legal, he didn't say moral only, you know. He said moral or legal authority to speak for him. So, he prevented us from bringing the vote of no confidence. Maybe he was afraid that one of his men would vote with us? Whatever it is. Turned it into a confidence motion and got certain prominent lawyers in St. Vincent to support that travesty. Which means that never again can you bring a confidence, a vote of no confidence? Because all the government has to do is to turn it into a confidence motion of the government. That is what we have to put up with in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. So, I am anxious, I am mindful of the time, but I want to just tell you briefly what I intend to address the audience in, in, um, USA. It's sorry, in, um, in Montreal, let me go to, go back to America. We'll be having a town hall meeting. And I plan to speak about F E A R. Fair. I would just say briefly that St. Vincent and the Grenadines is on the siege by the U L P administration. This is not a joke. Fair pervades our land. Persons are afraid. And what is more, you know, the U L P supporters live more in fear than us. Fear that they would lose their jobs, fear they'd be victimized, fear that they might be, um... Fair just pervades the land. I will tell you. Three different U L P parliamentarians on different occasions. And I'm not going to tell you whether their presence have passed. This is the absolute truth. Three different U L P parliamentarians came to my office at different times, sat across me from my desk and said that they wanted to leave the NDP. The U L P, sorry, and come to the NDP. But they were afraid. One of them said, "I don't want to end the, end the culture." People, I am not kidding. This is the absolute truth. Three of them, not at the same time. One of them had promised me that they would come out in the 2015 election. Long the whole, I saw the person in red on the platform in 2015. That is the type of fear I am speaking about that pervades our land in St. Vincent. They want to leave, but they haven't. Even Ralph Gonzalez is subject to that fear. He, he wants to leave, he's tired, he wants to go home, but he's fearful. And that is why he has hinted, "You know what? I might stay on for another two." So he can set up a puppet who can protect him. That's what he's hoping for. So my role as a candidate for the NDP. Bring hope. To remove the fear, to reunify our people, to end the divisiveness that is over our land. We're supposed to be St. Vincent, home of the blessed. But we are St. Vincent, S I N, that's what we are. St. Vincent, home of the cursed. And so we have to remove this fear that pervades our land. And the NDP has the prime to do it. You read our manifesto for 2015. Get hold of it. In every area, we can tell you what we're going to do. And it is doable. And we will do it. So, listen to my presentation in New York. The F stands for foreign relations. And I'll talk about the mess that they have made of our foreign relations. The E, economic decline under the U L P. The A, accountability. I'll be joining with our leader to call for absolute accountability. What the NDP, what the U L P has done is to mingle and co-mingle funds of the statutory bodies, the N I S, the Petricha Carib, the A I A. Statutory bodies. Something like how they do it, you know, layering in, um, in, in money laundering? They have mingled and co-mingled funds. And I have a quotation here that I can read where Ralph Gonzalez says that "You take money from one and you borrow from the other and you transfer the lands to the other." That is what they have done just before we came up, the last parliament. They laid the two hundred and twelve accounts. The two hundred and twelve accounts after Dr. Friday and the NDP has been calling for the accounts. They laid two hundred and twelve accounts in 2018, six years. When are we going to get two hundred and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? That is the type of government we have in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Would any of you have a business? Huh? And you have a secretary working with you or an accountant and they give you no account year after year after year and you will keep them employed? Why should we keep the U L P there? No account. Lack of accountability. There's a question, period after. So F E A and the R would be responsibility. What mankind is looking for? What is the hope of man for generations? Is to live in a world of peace. Why should we live in on the fair and threats and divisive things in St. Vincent and the Grenadines? The NDP wants to restore to you a world of peace, of happiness, where we can live again as one family under God. Not labour love, because labour love is divisive. We say Vincy love. We say love all of us. Love all of us. Vincy love, it does not matter if you are yellow or green or black. That is what I want to bring back. And as I go through my constituency in Western Georgia, that's what the people tell me. The fear, the victimization, the divisiveness. And that is what I want to bring back. That is what I want to bring to the constituency in Western Georgia and in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. Let us get back to the time when we didn't have to see only U L P people or one set of people getting jobs. Ralph Gonzalez's daughter. In, um, in the vision. Who? Jimmy Prince's daughter, girl in the day, daughter. What happened, only there no more jobs? Daughter-in-law. I mean, it is atrocious what we put up with, the nepotism that we put up with. And I say it is time to end that in St. Vincent and the Grenadines. And that's what the NDP is going to do for you. Kay has the key. Kay has the key to go where Maxi for Western Georgia and to win the election for the NDP. NDP, all the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. The inspiration. Okay, thank you. You heard the O D petition, you saw the ballot boxes. We all hear, but we see in the evidence here. I was wondering what kind of tag or how they have them tie up. Maybe next time, um, they might jump on one of the, um, one of the, the express and get some rope and tie them down. And once again, let's give, yeah, Senator, a round of applause for that lovely presentation. As promised, um... As promised, um, that we will hear from the other two representatives that are still in New York. We're trying to get a hold of, um, the other, uh, St. Lee Leacock by audio. So we'll just a few minutes wait and we'll link up with him. Thank you.